Thank you. Good evening, and I will call the January 13th City Council meeting to order. Councilwoman Daniels, you want to introduce the flag float? We'll just do the flag float.
Yep, there we go. I'm using a different computer. So, yes, absolutely. If you want to, please rise. I pledge allegiance.
Aye.
In effect of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Van, can you call? Who?
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
And Mayor Middleton.
Here.
So this meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, January 17th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at the city's YouTube channel.
Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
I move approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, motion by Bruins, second by Vice Mayor Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye. Motion passes. Our next item, please.
Our next item is presentation number four, recognition of outgoing Mayor Steve Miller. And we have the PowerPoint here with his dates that he was in service, and so I'll turn it over to the City Council. Usually, we have a plaque prepared that we present, but with COVID tonight, we will certainly present that at a later date, but I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you. I'll make a couple of comments. Wonderful to watch you serve and to learn a little bit about being mayor. You did a wonderful job. It's very inspiring for you.
Mayor, unfortunately, your audio is breaking up, and so we had a hard time hearing you.
No problem. Steve.
Just echo that. Steve, thanks for serving again as mayor. Really appreciate your dedication and getting the new community group up and running while you're, we're serving this year, and enjoy being a Whizzer.
Great job, Steve. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. It was a tough year. I think we all know that, and I appreciate all the help I received from both our executive team and especially Jennifer Tillery and the rest of staff. Everybody was very supportive, got us through this year. And I tell you, being mayor is like owning a boat. It was a great first day and a great last day, and got nothing but memories in between, so thank you, everybody.
If there are no further comments, I'll take next item.
Okay, our next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
I am sorry, everyone. I am having some really bad audio issues here. Let me try this again. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Sounds a lot better.
Okay, awesome. I can hear you all now. Wonderful. But once again, next item, please.
The next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Thank you. Let's start with Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you very much. Just no board meetings during the holidays, of course, but just hope that everybody had a wonderful holiday. Stay safe, and that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Monday was my first regional meeting of the year, and of highlight at the Regional Transit Board meeting was the voting was changed from waited to one vote for one member as of the first this, this year, and this was legislation sponsored by Assemblyman Ken Coey that was passed and signed into law last year. There's still a problem with the enabling legislation language from 1970s that gives City of Sacramento an additional vote, takes the vote away from the county, and Elk Grove is requesting a second seat based on their population. So as chairman, I formed an ad hoc committee to address this and any future voting distribution issue, so we'll be dealing with this over the next month. We have our first committee meeting later on in January. Also this week, attended a finance committee meeting with Councilmember Jeannie Bruins. We got the results of our annual comprehensive financial report audit with zero corrections and zero auditor comments. I think that's a first for the city ever. Kudos to our finance staff, and we reviewed the Chamber of Commerce sponsorship and grant application, and both these items will come to the full council, I think, at the next meeting. Let's see, we were also informed about the final rules on ARPA, and you'll be hearing about that under department reports, so I will not go on about that. Yesterday, we had the STA meeting, and SASSA, or the Sacramento Abandoned Vehicles Service Authority, received news that Assemblyman Kevin McCarty decided not to sponsor a legislative solution to continue this program in Sacramento County, and so this we put before the voters, requiring a two-thirds vote, and I'm not sure if it's in the primary or the general election this year. I should have been paying attention better. This program distributes approximately $60,000 to Citrus Heights through a $1 fee on vehicle registrations to pay for removal of abandoned vehicles from our streets and backyards, which is about half of our annual cost to get rid of these vehicles. However, there's a negative perception that this program is being used to target the homeless because some of the actions the City of Sacramento has taken in towing abandoned vehicles from illegal encampments. So it's actually a broken windows approach for us, where we tow abandoned vehicles to keep more than one vehicle from piling up. You know, someone dumps it, oh, this must be the dump spot for abandoned vehicles, and this keeps our streets clean and cleans up our private property. And yes, some of this can be attributed to the homeless. So what I thought might be an easy vote is being further complicated by, by this issue. So that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you. Jeannie, do you have anything?
Um, yes, briefly, we had no board meetings yet. Sanitation Board has not met yet this month, so no report there. But we did have a PAL meeting yesterday. It was very short, and, but we got an update on our cornhole tournament, which we are doing with the sponsorship by the Chamber of Commerce. And so the corn, if you go on the PAL website, you can get the details on that. It's going to be an exciting event this year. With COVID rearing its ugly head again, we pulled back on activities with the kids just to be safe, and so that's all I have to report on that. And Steve did a stellar job reporting on the finance committee meeting, and I have nothing to add.
Wonderful. Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. So there, I didn't have any board meetings as well. Just a, just a comment that I'm looking forward to a great year this year. I just want to wish all of my councilmember colleagues and in the whole city a happy new year. I did have the pleasure of opening the Raising Cane's restaurant there in, at Birdcage. I am stunned every time I drive by the length of the, and how long people will wait for those chicken fingers. That's, first of all, it's phenomenal, and kudos to, if they were brought here, kudos to the economic development team. Great job. They, I mean, that's, that's a very successful restaurant. On another note, last week, I happened to drive through Chico, and I was stunned. Chico is a smaller population than Citrus Heights does, or very near. But, oh my goodness, I drove through the, through the homeless encampment there. It's an unofficial space where they have set aside where people can camp, and it's big. It is really big there. So coming back to Citrus Heights, I was feeling very fortunate that we have a very small homeless population there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, and, yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Tim just reminded me of something. If I could just take a moment, I wanted to publicly thank the chief, Chief Turcot, and the Citrus Heights Police Department for jumping on a situation at San Juan and Sperry of a real problem child or group that we have that basically is taking over parking lots. And the, the amount of material that they had with them in this little tiny shopping center was taking up this huge portion, not only that, but also this blight, and they came out today and got that cleared out, and I just want to publicly thank them for doing that. That's all.
Okay, and I, my boards have not met this month yet either, but I did want to report that we have two vaccination clinics coming up. The first one being January 26th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the second being February 16th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at our Citrus Heights Community Center. So they'll be offering boosters of first and second vaccinations, and there's more information at the county website if anyone wants to know about it. And next item, please.
Our next item is public comment, and members of the public may address the council on any agenda item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to speak, use the raise hand function to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, I will allow you to unmute your microphone to speak. I do not have any written comments tonight, and I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar items five and six.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Schaefer and a second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number seven. The subject is appointments to regional boards, and there is a resolution. There are four resolutions, appointing members to represent on the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, and Sacramento Area Sewer District, the Sacramento Transportation Authority, and the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. And Citrus Heights City Council members represent the city on various regional boards and committees throughout Sacramento County as part of their duties as council members, and each January, the mayor makes appointments to regional boards and local committees, and four of which require appointments being made by formal motion of the city council. And so tonight before you is that item, and I also am sharing on my screen the appointments, all of the appointments, even those that include a formal action of the city council. So with that, if there are any questions, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay. Do I have, we have to take them one by one, so, tiers?
I'll, I'll grab the first one. There's one for each of us, Portia.
There we go.
I move, I move we adopt a resolution of the city council appointing a Citrus Heights member to serve as a representative on the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District Board of Directors, and appointing a member to serve as an alternate. And that would be, oh, I can't see it on my screen. Is that Tim Schaefer and Brett Daniels as an alternate?
Yeah.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Miller and a second by Bruins. Roll call, vote, please.
Mayor, could I speak to the motion, please?
Oh, yeah, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, in preparation of these appointments, we were asked to provide our preference sheets of what, what boards we wanted to serve in, which ones. We had a high level of interest and a low level of interest. When we got the appointments back, I was a little surprised because I indicated that I had a very low level of interest to serve on the Metropolitan Cable Television Commission and on the Public Library Authority, but I had a high level of interest to continue to serve, where I believe I've served for the last five years on the air quality board. So I don't know why I was placed on the other ones, why I was removed and or moved to an alternate position on the air board one. But before we move forward with the motion, I just wanted to see if there had been a mistake, that you had maybe misinterpreted my preferences, or if there was some other reason.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I wondered about that too, because I really believe in continuity on these boards, and Brett's done a great job in air quality, and I know Tim was really getting into the public library, so I wanted the same thing.
Okay, I did that just based upon the fact that I was trying to balance things, and I understand continuity, but I also believe that there should be a little bit more expansion. So for those boards where I felt like individuals could use a different viewpoint, for instance, you know, I know that Vice Mayor Schaefer is new to the council, and I want to give him the most exposure. So if you look at the matrix that's in front of us, he actually has a lot more local entities that he is responsible for, and I want to make sure we're doing the best to prepare him in case he becomes the mayor next year. So it's just about making sure that people have a wide breadth of experiences. And also, I, you guys know, you can, you can always talk to me about this. This is something I thought that will be within the best interest of the city.
The other thing I just wanted to mention also regarding the air board was, I believe, Councilmember Schaefer indicated that that was, he had a very low level of interest to serve on the air board. And so I was surprised that, again, he was put there and that I was moved to the alternate position.
Brett, that's better than the one year I thought one meant you really wanted it and five meant you didn't, and I was totally backwards.
Well, and that's why I was asking too, because I didn't know if maybe if it was read correctly or, or wrong, or, or what. So that, that's where I am on the motion. I don't know if somebody wants to offer an alternative motion to that, but just wanted to raise those points, and, and just, I know we're not on the library yet, or whether it needs a motion, but I, I'm not going to serve on the library board. It doesn't work out for me in, in my non-council life. And so that's one of the reasons that I did indicate that I had a low level of interest to serve on it. So some else, something else will have to happen with the library board, but I can't serve on that board.
I have point noted, well taken, unless there is an alternate motion.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to make an alternate motion, then. I'd like to, to make a motion that, that we just switch those where I sort of continue to serve on the library board and Brett consider, continues to serve on the air quality board.
Well, that's actually, um.
That's not what we're considering.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry. May I?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, you know, I think that's, I, I support that, but I don't think that's the motion we have in front of us. I think the motion we have in front of us is just for the one position, which is the, yeah, is, which is the air quali, yeah, the air quality board, so perhaps we can take this as two separate motions. When the, when the library board comes up, then we can address that one, but this one, the alternate motion then would be just for the air quality board, just, just for clarification.
Let me please amend the original motion.
Okay.
The original, I'm going to amend the motion to appoint Brett Daniels to the Board of Directors, and an alternate would be Tim Schaefer.
Of what?
The Sacramento Air Quality Management District. That's, that's what I'm amending.
Okay, we have an amended motion by Miller and a second still by Bruins?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, and Mayor, matter of just procedure, the, the substitute motion never did get a second. Otherwise, that would be the motion we would take first, but since it didn't get a second, we'll go ahead and go with Councilmember Miller's motion.
There we go. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
I'll keep going. I, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution to appoint a Citrus Heights member to serve as a representative on the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District and the Sacramento Area Sewer District Board of Directors, and that would be Jeannie Bruins, and appointing a member to serve as alternate would be Brett Daniels.
I second.
Is everyone okay with that? Any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Okay. Third resolution, I, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution, appointing, oh, this is STA.
Right.
Myself as the representative and Mayor Middleton as the alternate.
Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Bruins. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Okay, my last motion would be to adopt a resolution, appointing Portia Middleton to serve as director to the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, and appointing Jeannie Bruins as the alternate.
Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Bruins. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye. Okay, next item.
Next item, number eight. The subject is approval of city manager employment agreement, and the recommendation is to consider giving mayor authority to enter into an employment agreement with a city manager candidate.
Hi, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. This is City Attorney Ryan Jones. So with the pending retirement of City Manager Chris Boyd, the City Council conducts intensive search for a new city manager, and after hiring an executive search firm and conducting interviews, the City Council has before it the opportunity to select a new city manager. The top candidate that came from that recruitment process was Mr. Ashley Feeney, and per state law, it require, even though the contract is public and is posted to this agenda, Government Code 54953C does require me to go over the, to summarize the, the financial components of the proposed contract, so I'll do so now. It is a four-year term of the contract. Mr. Feeney would receive an annual salary of $240,000. He'd be entitled to health, dental, medical, and vision that's consistent, in terms of insurance, consistent with others' team. He received an option in the amount of $7,500 annually, and receive a 5% salary match in a 401A plan. He also would accrue leave at a rate of 160 hours per year, and the city's contributions to Per's retirement would be consistent with that of a Pepper employee, which is 7.59%. Those are the material terms Mr. Feeney, I believe, is on, on the Zoom, and I'll give him the opportunity, if you'd like, to, to, to address the council before voting on this, and then after that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have about the contract.
Yes, if, if Mr. Feeney is on, on the line, we'd definitely like to hear from him.
Terrific. Good evening, Madam Mayor Middleton, Vice Mayor Schaefer, members of the council. Happy New Year. Ashley Feeney, candidate for city manager appointment, happy to have the opportunity to address the council and the community about this pending decision. First, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the council, to each one of you for the time that you spent with me in the interview process, and the time that you spent in consideration of this important decision. I'm incredibly excited about the opportunity to serve the Citrus Heights community, and optimistic really about what the future holds, you know, in the days and years ahead. I, I really view this to be a pretty unique opportunity, not only for me, but also for the council and the community. Oftentimes, you know, we have a city manager recruitment for a city, and that city manager, you know, can come from within the region, or comes, you know, from another area within the state or country, you know, and relocate city area for the job. My wife, Cynthia, and I, we're not relocating here for a job. You know, we determined long ago that this is where we wanted to live. This is where we wanted to raise our family. And our family, you know, has many great memories in Citrus Heights, and, you know, we've established solid roots in the area and in the community. So to me, this is much more than a job or a career move. I'm really excited, and, you know, about the position, as it gives me an opportunity to work with the mayor, city council, terrific staff team, to put my background and skills in service of the community that I live in, and I care so much about. You know, after learning more, you know, about the vision the City Council has established for the future, you know, coupled with the conversations I've had with interim city manager Boyd, members of the staff team, I know this is the right place to best utilize my background, you know, and skill set in service to the community. I also just wanted to take a moment to thank interim city manager Boyd for graciously answering all my questions and helping in laying out the framework for a successful start to the city manager position if appointed. And I also wanted to thank the team members who've taken the time to talk to me as, as I'm being considered for this, for this role. It all started with Laura at the reception area at my interview, who was very gracious and welcoming. And then also the introductory conversations I had with Chief Truco, Regina, Bill, Casey, Megan, Nicole, Amy, Ryan, they're all incredibly helpful as well. I'd say the staff team in Citrus Heights, you know, they have a great reputation in the region. That's known. I mean, it's clear to me in my conversations that each team member to a person that I talked to is very dynamic, you know, dedicated, passionate about their work for the city and, and their service to the community. And I'd say that, you know, in those initial conversations, it's clear to me that they embody the traits of the kind of people that you want to collaborate and work with and continue to move the city forward in a positive direction. So really excited about the team members I've met. See some on the Zoom meeting here, so nice, nice to see you as well. And I just wanted to just again, express my gratitude. I'm, I'm very grateful to be considered for this appointment and look forward to the opportunity to work with the mayor, city council, my future staff colleagues, and the Citrus Heights community in continuing to make the city a great place to live. You know, this opportunity definitely feels right to me. Citrus Heights has so much to offer today and tremendous future opportunities. Hope to be part of it, and thank you for your time and consideration and for appointment to city manager.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Feeney. How will the count, yes.
I, I just want to say, Ash, it was, it was a very, very tough choice. We had some great candidates with comparable experience and skill sets. For me, where you stood out, head and shoulders above the rest, was your ability to get things built. Hotels, developments, and this was in Davis, what we view as a can't do community. Well, I just can't imagine. I'm so excited what you can do in a can do community, and what, what we can do with Sunrise Tomorrow, so I'm very, very excited.
Mayor, I'll take a few words, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
I really want to thank the, the search company, the, the, the people that got us to Ash, and they did an outstanding job. They really did. Extremely professional, very thorough, really thorough, and they brought us some amazing candidates. And I, I think the reflection on the level of candidates that put in for this job shows something very positive on Citrus Heights. It's a positive indication of Citrus Heights. And it was tough, I think, to kind of echo what Steve said. It was tough. It was tough until the end, though, and, and then Mr. Feeney really stood out. He really, really stood out. And I am so incredibly excited. I, I, I have the utmost confidence, just over the top confidence. I have the utmost confidence, just over the top confidence, that we have made the right choice, that he is going to take us to another level, that we're going to be very happy, and not only us, but the city, the people and the businesses here are going to be very happy with him, and on top of everything, he's a pretty funny guy. He's a little formal tonight, but he's a really funny guy, and he said some really important things during his final interviewing, which showed he's a genuine guy, and he's got a great heart, and you can see that already. He lives a stone's throw from Citrus Heights, and I mean a stone's throw, you could probably throw a rock and hit his house, so we're extremely blessed to have this man in our future. I want to thank you for coming aboard.
And I'll just be third in line for welcoming you, Ash, to our community. I echo everything that's been said so far, and just wanted to add that one of the important aspects that I saw in you that stood out for me was a person that I saw could, would value and be able to work well with the staff that we have. We love our staff, and we want to make sure that they are well taken care of and that they feel free to do their job and to continue to develop their careers, and you struck me from the things you said and just your demeanor to be without question the exceptional candidate that will make that happen, and so I suspect that your interviews with staff have gone well, and I'm so glad that we can take the cover off of all of this so that we can show you off to the community, and I just want you to know how excited I am to work with you in the days ahead. So welcome.
Vice Mayor, any comments?
Yes. Absolutely, I have comments. So, you know, most people, the general public and even a lot of people on this call don't realize what a tremendous amount of work this was to find the right candidate. I have a stack of paperwork here. I probably spent six or seven hours on this stack of paperwork right here. This is all the resumes and Ash's resumes right on top, and then we did the whole process of interviews. It was about 13 hours, so there's a tremendous amount of work that went through this, to go through this process. One of the things that stood out for me with Ash was he brought to his interview the first hundred days in a bound folder. Very impressive, very, the man was prepared. He was prepared, he was relaxed, because that's where the relaxation, the candor comes from, is when you're prepared and you are ready for an interview, and he was clearly ready for that. So congratulations, I certainly support the selection. It is, I can't tell you how much, how delighted we are to have you, Ash.
Well, now that we're done kicking the tires, so to speak, let's formalize this relationship. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I would suggest, real quick, before you do it, that you just see if there's any public comments from the few people that might be on Zoom.
Oh, is, are there any public comments? Any raised hands?
I'm checking right now, and I do not see any raised hands.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, then I would like to move that we give the mayor authority to enter into an employment agreement with a city manager candidate, and that candidate being Mr. Ashley Feeney.
I'll second. Oh, you beat me to it.
Okay, motion by Bruins, second by Daniels. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. I've very much been looking forward to this day. You know, as you all know, from the conversations we had, everybody that, you know, is a part of this Zoom meeting, from the council, the mayor, the staff, really excited and grateful to have this opportunity to work with each one of you, to just continue the great foundation that's already been built here in Citrus Heights from so many others, and, you know, continue to move that in a positive direction with the wider team. It's going to be great in the days and years ahead, and I really appreciate this vote of confidence.
Okay, congratulations again. Next item?
Our next item is department report number nine. The subject is the American Rescue Plan Act Final Guidelines.
Good evening, Mayor Middleton and members of city council. That is a very exciting item to follow, but we'll do our best. Both myself, Megan Huber, Economic Development and Communications Manager, and my colleague, Administrative Services Director, Bill Zanoni, are giving a department report on Citrus Heights American Rescue Plan Act spending. If council recalls, we originally planned to bring before you this evening a COVID-19 Small Business Recovery Grant program. However, in the quickly evolving world of American Rescue Plan Act, I think there were some pretty big developments, so that agenda item is, was pulled. Please be assured that there are still guidelines ready in the hopper and ready to go, but instead, we would like to give you a department report to review those updates and staff's recommended next steps based on those updates. I am going to share my screen.
All right, so, good evening. I'm Madam Mayor, council members, I am Bill Zanoni, the interim Administrative Services Director, and as Megan indicated, what we would like to do this evening is provide you an update on the American Rescue Plan Act Final Guidelines that we just received within the past week, and as was indicated earlier, this information was reviewed with the administration or the Finance and Administration Committee at their meeting on Tuesday. So just as a reminder, the American Rescue Plan Act, which was signed into law last March, allocated $15.6 million to the city of Citrus Heights. We received the first half of that, $7.8 million, last May, and based on discussions over the past week, we're fairly certain that we will receive the second payment of that same amount in May of this year. So of the city's first allocation, the city council back in June of last year appropriated $5.3 million to restore 22 public safety positions in the police department. That left two point, about approximately $2.5 million, which, when added to the final payment that we anticipate receiving, will give us $10.3 million for the city council to allocate. So as we've also discussed previously, when the first funding was issued back in May, the U.S. Treasury issued what they called the First Interim Final Rule, which were the preliminary expenditure guidelines, and at that point in time, the Treasury indicated that the final rules would be issued during the summer or fall of 2021. That didn't happen, but during this interim period. Let me if we can go to the next one, Megan. We did work within the four eligible guidelines that are included in the program. Within those four categories, we have been working within the second or the third and fourth categories, which are responding to the negative economic impact caused by the COVID pandemic, and the most flexible category, which is providing government services up to the amount of revenue loss due to the COVID pandemic, and based on the interim guidelines, this fourth category, the revenue loss category for the city of Citrus Heights, that calculation amounted to $3.2 million. So again, in the interim guidelines, not only did they identify allowable expenditures for these funds, they also identified five uses of American Rescue Plan Act funds, which are not allowed under any of the expenditure categories, and those included an offset due to a reduction in tax revenue from changes in legislation or laws, deposits into a pension fund to reduce unfunded pension liabilities, contributions to reserve funds, satisfaction of legal settlements or judgments, and these funds are not allowed to be used for debt service.
As council recalls, staff presented our Citrus Heights COVID recovery map that we developed in compliance with the First Interim Final Rule. It was a four-phase program developed and reviewed by city council at multiple department reports between June and December of last year. As I mentioned, our next step was embarking on Phase Two, the launch of a small business COVID recovery grant, and after that, a potential travel, tourism, and entertainment recovery grant we committed to come before you this meeting. Like I said, those guidelines are still ready to go after we present and decide direction based on these current updates. The final rules were issued by U.S. Treasury last Thursday, January 6.
What these, what these final rules do is provide significantly more flexibility and greater simplicity in the American Rescue Plan Act program. The most significant change included in the final rules, and really one of the main reasons we wanted to have this discussion with council this evening, is the addition of an option under the Replacing Lost Revenue category, which allows all recipients of ARPA funds to either go through the detailed calculation, which in our case resulted in a calculation of $3.2 million, or utilize a standard allowance of $10 million, and what that means is funds within, all public agencies have the ability to use up to $10 million of their American Rescue Plan Act allocation for the lost revenue category. Funds within this category can be used for any government service, any service that's traditionally provided by a government, and that would include staffing, administrative costs, facilities, road building and maintenance, other infrastructure costs, public safety services, even including the purchase of vehicles. It's, it is the most flexible of all of the categories. Less significant, but still important changes in the final rules include expanded eligible uses under the, responding to the public health and economic impact category related to capital expenditures for affordable and supportive housing, and also removing the restriction to not only restore staffing to pre-pandemic level, but under certain conditions, provides the flexibility to hire above the January 2020 baseline level. These final rules take effect on April 1st, although the Treasury did, in their final rules, allow for the implementation of the, these new guidelines effective immediately. So what these final rules, the impact that they have on the council's options for expanding the ARPA funding, we tried to identify on this chart, under the interim guidelines, which is the middle column of our $10.3 million of unallocated funding, we had calculated $3.2 million for the least restrictive lost revenue category, and the remaining seven, roughly $7.1 million, was limited to the much more restrictive responding to the negative economic COVID impact category, which is where we had a discussion last month about utilizing about 1.4 million of these funds for small business recovery grants. Under the final rules, the city council now has the option to allocate up to $10 million of the $10.3 million remaining funds to this revenue loss category, and that would give the, a much larger range of options for utilizing this one-time funding.
In terms of next steps, this evening, staff would like to receive council direction on moving forward with the small business grant program immediately or postponing until after a study session in which we can holistically assess the most prudent and futuristic ways that we can spend these one-time dollars. If we are moving forward immediately, staff would need direction on determination of the funding allocation amount. For instance, two possible amounts could be the original $1.4 million recommended previously during interim guidelines. A potential suggestion that came up during finance committee dialogue is to immediately launch the remaining COVID recovery restricted dollars that you saw in the previous table, which was in excess of a little over $300,000 to get us started while we're doing the rest of its reassessment, and then either way, we would schedule a study session to holistically assess potential funding needs under these final treasury guidelines. And with that, Bill and I will open it up for questions, comments, and feedback.
Okay, Megan, could you take it back to the last slide, please? Thank you. Any comments from council?
I have comments.
Ms. Daniels?
Yeah, you know, I'm not going to get political, but I'm just going to say I'm not surprised that these guidelines came out of this administration. You know, this is not the American Government Rescue Plan. This is supposed to be something for people and businesses and stuff like that, and I don't support and won't support any other funds being moved towards, going towards the city, if you will, the city government of these dollars. That's not the purpose here, and it would be such an incredible disservice, I think, to the, to the community to take these dollars and do that. Those dollars, if we spend them on these kind of things that are now allowed, those dollars are probably actually going to go out of Citrus Heights. You know, even if we did some road project, we'd be paying a company that probably did not operate out of Citrus Heights, and they give us a road, and then they would take the dollars that they earned and go somewhere else and spend them. These dollars need to be directed as much as possible into Citrus Heights and as much as possible so that we can continue in the future benefiting from where we put these dollars. Building a road or, you know, whatever it was staffing is not going to do anything for the future here. We need to make sure these dollars stay here where we need them in our community.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have a comment. I certainly would love to see the, I'd like to see the, wait before we make a decision on any of this, any direction, and really do a deep dive into a study session to see what the possibilities are. I certainly would, am inclined to agree with Councilmember Daniels in that this this, the concern that I have is with these are one-time funds. And if we build into staff, the those one-time funds, we're obligating our long term to those to that those same funds, and we may not have those funds to replenish them with. So I would take a very cautious approach to how this money gets allocated, certainly businesses. Looking back, we just a just a month, month and a half ago, we got a report that said that we were in a $6.2 million surplus. I think that that again, this is this is great news. Number one, this is great news that we have a lot more flexibility, but I would like to see us move cautiously towards this, so that we can how can we serve the community with this with these this better flexibility?
Hi, this is Jeannie. I concur with what Vice Mayor Schaefer has said and just wanted to, as a a member of the Finance Committee, make a couple of comments. And and so to step back to do a comprehensive or holistic program is, I think, the wise thing to do. We this $10 million is money that we can allocate without having to do a lot of administrative reporting back to the federal government. And it's fortunate, I think, that we don't have a whole lot more than that beyond, I mean, kind of parallels with what we have to work with. And so the thought was to immediately put a program in place. And it's going to take, you know, a couple of weeks to get this up and running, probably anyway, maybe not that much, but to give immediate access to the business community. And in a comprehensive program that we finally decide upon, we as a council can vote to do the a full 1.4 million or even maybe more to the business community. This gives us a lot of flexibility, so it's not interpreted as Mr. Daniels has said that we want to take money away from the business community. We just want to step back and put together a program that's going to be sustainable for this $10 million. And at the same time, immediately release $300,000 to applications from the business community or a program to put that money in their hands. So I just wanted to clarify that. It wasn't an either or. It was a plus and. And so I I concur with staff's recommendation and with Vice Mayor Schaefer's comments that we do have a study session where we can more thoroughly vet our opportunities and take a look at the options and the decisions that we have to make that will move our community forward directly and through the supportive programs that we offer them in the city. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree and concur with Jeannie. The suggestion to do the $300,000 now is to get something out to our community and then talk about how much we really can do. Now, I think one of the other benefits of doing something right away, but less modest than what we first talked about, is to gauge the need from our business community. If we just get a huge outpouring, that'll give us a metric to to guide us when we sit down in a study session and assess the funding needs. I also agree with Mr. Schaefer that programs have to be sustainable. I did think there'd be an opportunity here to do more with the help for the homeless and intervention. Perhaps another navigator. I don't know what that looks like. I'm just just spitballing. But anyway, that was my thought was get something out now. Don't hold back anything. And gauge what the community needs and move forward.
Okay, I have to say that I agree with the majority here that getting something out expeditiously is important, but also making sure we're taking that step back to really look at how can we holistically apply all of this funding in a manner that is sustainable, but also meets the community's needs. There we there are a lot of needs. It's no different than any other time we go through our budgeting. And we have to make sure that we're doing the best we can with this one-time limited funding. And Megan, is that enough direction for you and Bill?
Yes, absolutely. What I've heard from you, Mayor, and councilmembers is that you're directing staff to immediately launch a Small Business Recovery Grant with the little more than $300,000 in the COVID Recovery Bucket that has been fully identified by the final guidelines. And then we will schedule a study session to be able to have a deep and substantive conversation about how to best steward these content lines.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Next item is city manager items.
None this evening. Thank you.
Okay. And the next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anything? No? Brett? Yes.
Yeah, just real quick, and please forgive me, and I failed to mention this on the council comments before, but I'd like to take the opportunity to wish my firstborn a happy birthday. She turned 39 young years old today, and I love you, little princess. Happy birthday, Stephanie.
Happy birthday.
Yes.
Thirty-nine. Good Lord.
If there are no further comments, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good job.